Thank you.
Welcome to the November tenth, twenty twenty five Board of Alderman Meeting, and I now call the meeting to order. I would ask everyone to please rise and join the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would now ask the City Clerk to call a roll for attendance.
Alderman Friedman, here. Alderman Gerber?
Here.
Alderman Harder?
Here.
Alderman Hughes?
Here.
Alderman Kinsella?
Here.
Alderman Murphy?
Here.
Alderman Sawyer?
Here.
Alderman Schwer?
President.
Mary is presiding meeting on the floor.
Thank you. Before you want to amend us, just a couple of quick comments. One, obviously, want to welcome Alderman Friedman to the board, and again, thank you for your interest in taking this position and its responsibility, and I know you will be diligent, so thank you for coming on board. Secondly, I just want to remind everyone, and everybody knows this, but tomorrow's Veterans Day, a pretty special day in this country. A lot of young men and women are serving this country right now as we speak, and anybody who knows much history about our veterans, whether it was in Desert Storm or in World War II or Korea, they're all true American heroes who have served. And so tomorrow, maybe think about the veterans a little bit, if you see one, thank them for their service, because they're a special group of folks, that's for sure. The minutes from our last meeting, October twenty seventh. I seek a motion and second to approve. So move.
Second.
Any discussion or amendment? Alderman Gerber?
Just one little thing. Under hearing from citizens, talks about Joe Mierischkin, that's C Y R I L.
If the board's comfortable, I think we can treat that as a script nurse. We have a speaker sheet that matches that, so I'm comfortable if you guys are.
Certainly.
Or you guys, designer, you're good. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I think there's one citizen that wants to speak, but I'll wait until we get to Agenda Item Number Two, because it might be more appropriate. There is, we do have a public hearing, a public hearing to review a request by Dan Clemmie. I think that's pronounced as a Burtville Recreation African, on behalf of Chris Sawyer, owner, for approval of conditional use permit for accessory structure, a permanent outdoor game court located at one three seven seven zero Stone Mountain Court and the suburban estate zoning district. I now declare the public hearing open. Would ask the City Clerk to enter exhibits.
Exhibit number one is affidavit of publication of notice of hearing, published in the St. Louis County on October twenty third, twenty twenty five. Exhibit number two is typed written notice of hearing, posted at the municipal center, on the city's website, sent via notify me, posted on the subject property, and mailed to property owners within three hundred feet of that property with a list of the property owners attached. And exhibit number three is bill number twenty five forty nine.
Thank you very much. I would invite Mr. Clemmie, the interrupted authority, to answer any questions if he's here.
Mr. Clemmie's not here, but we have Brad Furfaro from Timberline, who's our contractor on landscaping site.
Very good.
I'm the owner, yes. My wife Julie's with me, I'm Chris Sawyer. And then this is Brad from Timberline Landscaping. He's working with Dan Clemmie and Burtville. So Dan cannot be here tonight.
That's fine. And could you give your name and address for our records?
Yeah, it's Brad Furfaro, F U R F A R O, and I'm with Timberline Landscapes.
Okay.
We're at the business address is twenty eight, twenty seven, Breckenridge Industrial Court, St. Louis, Missouri, six thirty one four four.
And at this point, I'll open it up to any members of the board who would have a question. And then I would say, I have a, you know, Mr. Roddy, this might be the right time for your comments. Since you signed up, you were...
Can I explain to, do I need the microphone?
It would help if you did. It would also. And just if you give your name and your address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Roger Riley, R I L E Y, easy way, and I live at two one four four Mason Link Drive in the Mason Green Condominiums, which is below the project that we're discussing here.
Right.
I've been designated to be the spokesman for the condo tonight. I'm a trustee member. So this request was a little bit of a surprise. They, we've been watching the house go off and the pool, and we've been cooperating with the SOR MSD access and everything. But we had some issues when the Stone Mountain subdivision was being built. And I'm sure some of you folks remember the runarounds we had with the builders as far as drainage and erosion and mud. It was, it was a big mess. So of course, when we got the notice of this, that was our first concern. You know, one is how long is it going to take to construct this field? And how are they going to address the drainage issues during construction? We've looked at the plans and we realized that they've made some commitments to drainage after everything's done. But during the whole process of the construction, our property is going to, could be adversely affected by rain, runoff, snow melt, whatever's going to happen. Two is, the project is at the far corner of this property, and it really is close to two of our streets in our three street development. So we're concerned not only with additional traffic, but noise from the pickleball court, which seems to be a big problem in a lot of communities. And secondly, how did they come to pick this spot in their lot to put this? You know, it just seems very close to where we've got a very quiet neighborhood, and this seems very close to that. Now, we all understand it's not going to use ten hours a day, or twelve hours a day, or have tournaments and everything. But the Sires do have a couple of young sons, I believe, and they're high school age. And we can see this become a kind of a magnet for after-school activities. So that, of course, is going to come with not only the noise of the activities, but it could be trash, could be people parking on our streets. And we're a private development, and we maintain our own streets. So we're kind of concerned about that. We're concerned if they're thinking about putting a point of ingress or egress on the back end of their lot so they could access this facility, which would mean they'd be going through our properties that we maintain. So that's some of the concerns that we have. They don't sound very, I don't want to say impeded impediments to them having building this thing. But we just wanted to get a little better idea of, is there a different place on their lot they could put this development? Is there a way that they could swap where the pickleball court is, maybe put that closer to the house instead of closer to our end of the property? And we also, you know, we saw that they're going to put a ten-foot fence of some kind or retaining wall. And I don't think any of the people in my subdivision want to look at like a Topgolf backyard from our place, because right now, there are lots treeed and we've got a lot of good shrubs in our properties. It's a very pretty area right back in there. And we're just have these concerns. And one of the things we'd like to ask, if it's possible, and I don't know if it's you guys that could do this, but we'd like to have some time to go up and visually inspect where they're going to put this. Because coming off of these diagrams and these plot assessments, it'd be a lot easier if we come up there and get a look, because maybe this really isn't going to be that close to us, but we just can't tell from the structures, from the prints. So like I say, we're not, we're not objecting to the project. We'd just like to see if we could have a little input into it so it doesn't adversely affect all the folks in our neighborhood. So I think that's, that's about all about God, what I can say.
I would like to thank you for coming up and voicing your concerns. Glad you're here and you have some support with that. A couple of, you can, you can have a seat at this point. And a couple of comments. Number one, is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak? All right, fine. And a couple of thoughts. Number one, very last point you made, myself or the board, I don't think we, any of us have the right to tell you that you can go on somebody else's private property to examine view angles. If they invite you, I'm fine, but I'm virtually certain, myself or the board, don't, don't have that leeway, because it is their private property. Secondly, this is a public hearing where people can come and express their views. And what I will say to the Sires, if they have desire to touch on this, a couple of those points now, that would be fine with me. You're not really compelled to at this point. But if you once wish to make any comments, any of those concerns they have, the floor is yours.
Sure, we'll address some of the points, and then Brad, you can help me do the construction side of things. Well, there's some easy yes and no's. There is no, we're not going to ask for any ingress or egress from the, from your side, the condo side of the property, so that will all be fenced completely. The netting that was mentioned, it's ten-foot netting, it's well below the tree lines, and it's in compliance with the Town and Country codes. The area itself was actually an old riding arena. So the property before we owned it was an old horse farm, and they would show horses, and it was a, there was a ninety five, one hundred and eighty oval in the southeast corner of the property that was already flat and intended for horse shows, basically. And so all we're doing is just putting a sportboard in that area. Really, we have two boys that play tennis, and so it's really more tennis than anything that we're going to be playing there. We, you know, we'll have a basketball hoop, and, you know, maybe play pickleball here and there, but it's primarily tennis. And then wiffle ball will be on the other side, and that's a non-hard surface, permeable surface.
I just want to say with the netting, too, we also don't want to look at a net from our back, you know, looking out our windows. So the net that we're proposing is simply to keep the wiffle balls, like when our kids are playing wiffle ball, from going onto the property of the condominium area and, you know, flying over there. And then on the tennis court side, it's only on the far, I guess, south end of the court is only, that's the only spot where a higher, like ten-foot, that would be. And that's just to, again, if a tennis ball were to go that direction, it wouldn't go into, really, it wouldn't probably end up in the condo streets, but it would end up in the bushes and things back there. So that's just to kind of keep it in our yard.
And just estimate it was about, Brad would think, two hundred feet from the edge of the sportboard to the condos, only on both sides.
At least.
At least. And then quite a bit green, scrubbed trees and bushes and things in between.
I also think folks who live in those condos would be appreciative of hearing that there'll be a definite effort to make sure that any drainage from rain and other stuff during the, during the construction would be, I mean, sometimes some of these folks do a great job of that, and sometimes they're sort of shoddy, if you know what I'm saying. And I talk about specifically Stone Mountain, but just any in general. There are times when we go to, go out to someplace where this has been done, and you can see the plastic fencing and the straw. I mean, they've done a great job of containing that. Other places, not so much. So I think it would be good to think, hey, we are going to really, you know, we're going to really make sure that when this is being constructed, and I don't really know the timeframe, how long it takes to build this court, which I think it's probably a reasonable amount of time, but making sure that that drainage and silt and mud stuff is well contained so it doesn't interfere in their condominiums and their streets.
And we appreciate the concern. Brad, if you want to talk to the construction, how that would work?
Yeah. Yeah, well, for sure, follow all the must-need guidelines about containing everything with the straw bottles and stuff like that, whatever is required. But obviously, as we get closer to winter, it's, you know, the schedule's going to be dependent on weather, but I think this project is only sixty to ninety days at, at most, to be honest. You know, they may pour the concrete in one or two days mag, so that's the big, the big item that we're going first is, is the concrete court. And then we'd come in and a lot of our, our work is on the wiffle ball side and then repairing the lawn and putting new sod in around it. But we're doing that with open grain base, so there's no impervious area when we're working. So we're just going to lay the turf on top of that, and we've got the drainage and the detention, the drywall that goes in, which will contain everything when we're done. So there's not going to be any runoff from the site. And then...
So just a quick question on that exact point. Yeah, I, I think the residents take a great comfort of knowing that the drainage pattern, long-term, I don't know how good the drainage pattern is right now, but assuming that whatever you do isn't going to make it worse.
Right, right. Yeah, the slope is just a typical two percent slope across, going from west to east. So it's just two percent, which is typical for lawns. Yeah. And then, I mean, we were talking about views into and out of the property. You know, some of you may remember the original site plan we did with the perimeter plantings on the outside edge. A lot of those evergreens and trees, we overplanted that, so for the, for the situation. Yeah.
Alderman Gerber?
Yes, I had a question. Developer, did you have to submit a plan to MSD, runoff plan or something?
I believe that the engineer did, I believe. I'm not positive on that. I don't know for sure. The civil bowls did, I believe.
They talked to him.
Yes, they talked to Ryan.
They did. Did you get a copy of that? Was that from...
It's all part of the package. Yep.
That's, but it's, that's wrong.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there was no, MSD does not even approve it. We, our symbol engineer, Eric Denmeyer, was in touch with Ryan from Town and Country. I don't recall his last name. Sorry, sorry. So I don't want to interrupt your sound, but that's...
Which is...
Yeah. The system that's in place is designed for all the stormwater created by the new house and this court.
Alderman Schwer?
If I'm reading the plans, it's, the condo is about thirty feet below grade. So that seems about right, I'm agreeing with Ryan. So as they're looking out, I mean, they're viewing the plantings that you just spoke about. Yeah, there's a lot of evergreens right on that corner that are pretty fast growing. They might not even see any of the, I think eventually they won't see any, because there's a lot of existing. Yeah. Green there. Yeah, sure.
I now declare the public hearing closed. Thank you all for participating. Next, I seek a motion to confirm my appointment of Alderman Schwer to the Public Works Commission. Is there a second? Second.
I need a first on that?
To move.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Here you go. Thank you. At this point, I recognize the board's opportunity to provide reports. Alderman Harder?
Hey, this meeting, very light on the PFP Commission. Basically, just a couple of thank yous to Westminster and Kirkwood School for inviting the police department for their first responders and Veterans Day celebrations. And then they also just recently held a quarterly supervisory staff meeting, and they're going over the personnel reassignments of their new squad for twenty twenty six. And we should be at full stop by year to year.
That's great. That's great. Alderman Sawyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to mention that the Ways and Means Commission unanimously approved the staff recommendations for the OPEV audit with Dan Ziger and Markoff for a five-year term beginning with fiscal year twenty twenty five, with a meeting on October twenty ninth. At that same meeting, the commission also gave unanimous approval for the twenty twenty six proposed budget as presented at the same meeting. And those will see forthcoming as well.
Thank you. Alderman Murphy?
Thank you, Sheriff. Parks and Trails Commission has a couple of events coming up we want to make sure that the community is aware of and the board. The annual Turkey Trial will be at Longview on Thanksgiving morning, November twenty seventh. It's a three-mile run, starts at nine o'clock, followed by a half-mile case run at ten o'clock. Race day registration and T-shirt pickup will be inside Longview Farmhouse. First three hundred people are guaranteed, first two hundred registrants are guaranteed, the seventy-fifth anniversary Turkey Trial. I'm sure it's really a very attractive shirt number. We'll also have shuttle service available to and from First Church of Christ Jesus from eight to eleven. The bridge is in a repaired state where we won't be able to have people going through Longview as well. Especially thanks to Peoples National Bank, Missouri Baptist, Medical Center, and Get Center Council for supporting the event. Sponsors are incredibly, are an incredible part of the community and run at these type of events. The other item, of course, is December sixth. Might get on your calendar, please stop by Town Square, December sixth, from one to seven. There'll be shopping, live music, dance performances, and a visit from the North Pole, and Santa's workshop, all arriving by truck by two P.M. Food, drinks, and sweet treats are available throughout the day. Drive at five thirty for tree lighting and a time capsule installation that'll be at our final celebration of our seventy-fifth anniversary of the city. We'll also have River Blenders chorus singing and entertaining us at that point. The lights have already been set up by Blue. We appreciate Blue for their work on that. And again, a big, big thank you to Peoples National Bank, our presenting sponsor for that event.
Alderman Kinsella?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll reiterate that the Planning and Zoning Commission will meet on Wednesday, November nineteenth, at seven P.M. There continues to be only one item for the agenda, a conditional use permit for a driveway gate at one three seven seven South Masonburg. All are welcome. Thank you.
Alderman Hughes?
Thank you, Mayor. The Architectural Review Board meeting on November the third, following the work approved. A new single-family home at nine one, one, excuse me, nine one three Terrabilla Drive, a new single-family home at one two three oh five Wildlife Trail, a new single-family home at one three seven four three Belkress Court, a new single-family home at one one seven five eight West Hill Drive, a new single-family home at twelve Brookwood Road, and in addition, at forty Year Field Lane. In addition, the board continued to review a new single-family home at one two three oh one Wildlife Trail for adjustments to be made to the roof line. The next meeting of the Architectural Review Board is scheduled for Monday, December the first, five thirty P.M., and the following item will be considered a new single-family home at one two three oh five Wildlife Trail, that's the new Terrabilla subdivision. And as always, all are welcome.
You've been busy over there, Mayor. You have been busy. Next, moving on to the Senate. Oh, City Administrator, you already just reported.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to mention, all of you met our new Public Works Director, Todd Ray. He started today. Todd comes to us with experiences as Public Works Director, both in the city of Webster Groves and Kirkwood. He also worked in private industry for a while. He's a licensed engineer in Missouri and Illinois, so we welcome Todd aboard.
Welcome. Well, I guess in the Webster-Kirkwood football game every Friday, cheese snaps.
When I left Kirkwood to go to Webster, the mayor came to my office and said, you're going to the dark side.
All right. Next, going on to unfinished business. Oh, sorry. Alderman Schwer, sorry.
When was the last time we were at full strength in the Peace Department?
Chief? I believe there, it's been a while. I believe there was a short time in twenty eighteen that we were full staffing. We've been down a minimum of two since that time.
And while you're, are there any officers that you'd like to mention that are former veterans, or that are veterans?
Sure. Officer Rosa Pruitt, she's in Army Reserves, and Lieutenant Dan Dallas, in the United States Air Force. So we'll be recognizing them for Veterans Day. Thank you.
And Ann, isn't your assistant in the military?
She is.
Yeah, 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 yeah. All right. Next, bill number twenty five dash forty eight, supported by the orders of all without objection, with the City Clerk reading the bill for the second time.
Bill number twenty five forty eight is an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a STBG Surface Transportation Block Program Agreement for the boat road resurfacing and pedestrian improvements project for and on behalf of the city of Town and Country with the state of Missouri by and through the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission.
Thank you. Seek a motion and second to approve?
To move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Would ask the City Clerk for a roll. Call a roll.
Alderman Gerber?
Aye.
Alderman Hughes?
Aye.
Alderman Harder?
Aye.
Alderman Schwer?
Aye.
Alderman Kinsella?
Aye.
Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer?
Aye.
And Alderman Freeman?
Aye.
That bill passes unanimously and becomes ordinance number four seven one nine.
Well, that's your careful unfinished business. Now moving on to new business. Bill number twenty five dash forty nine, will be sponsored by Alderman Gerber from World War II, without objection, with the City Clerk reading the bill for the first time.
Bill number twenty five forty nine is an ordinance approving a conditional use and authorizing a conditional use permit for an accessory structure, a permanent outdoor game court located at one three seven seven zero Stone Mountain Court in the city of Town and Country.
Thank you. This bill, number twenty five forty nine, is continued to the meeting on Monday, November twenty fourth, for the second reading and consideration. Next, bill number twenty five fifty eight, will be sponsored by Alderman Sawyer, without objection, with the City Clerk reading the bill for the first time.
Bill number twenty five fifty is an ordinance accepting the proposal of Dan Ziger and Markoff LLP to provide Jazzby Seventy Five actuarial services for other post-employment benefits for retirees for fiscal years twenty twenty five through twenty twenty nine.
Thank you. This bill, number twenty five fifty, is continued to the meeting on Monday, November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, the second reading and consideration. Next, bill number twenty five dash fifty one, perhaps sponsored by the board as a whole, without objection, with the City Clerk reading the bill for the first time.
Bill number twenty five fifty one is an ordinance authorizing a renewal agreement with Delta Dental of Missouri for participation by the city of Town and Country in a group dental benefit plan for its employees.
Thank you. This bill, number twenty five fifty one, is continued to the meeting on Mondays, November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, for the second reading and consideration. Next, bill number twenty five dash fifty two, also sponsored by the board as a whole, without objection, with the City Clerk reading the bill for the first time.
Bill number twenty five fifty two is an ordinance adopting a voluntary vision care benefit plan through IMed for the employees of the city of Town and Country.
Bill number twenty five fifty two is continued to the meeting on Monday, November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, for the second reading and consideration. for the second reading and consideration. Next, Bill Number twenty-five dash fifty-three, also sponsored by the board as a whole. Without objection, will the City Clerk read the bill for the first time?
Bill Number twenty-five fifty-three is an ordinance authorizing the city of Town and Country's continued participation with Standard Insurance Company for group life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance and group long-term disability insurance for its employees.
Thank you. Bill Number twenty-five fifty-three is continued to the meeting on Monday, November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, the second reading and consideration. Almost miraculous, we do not have a warrant list. I do not have any other business to bring up. But roll it up to the board, if they have anything else they wish to pull behind about. Alderman Schwer?
Just want to say thank you for the opportunity for Public Works. It'll break out. Yes.
I will seek a motion and second to adjourn? So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have a great evening, and welcome.
Thank you.